Um, they're supposed to be there like two, three o'clock and.
He's not coming. They won't, I don't think they really will see him in my waiting room, but I think around six he's gonna see.
Six o'clock P M?
That's when he arrives, but you can get there. So same time as the.
Yeah, no, we had that planned and it's.
Okay.
We have our science. So we don't think a lot of people are gonna show up for.
I'll be there.
Yep.
You think people understand that it's an open house, you can come whenever, we're gonna have gliders, you walk in, you can walk around.
That's what you do in an open house when they have an open house on the house, or they have an open house.
The people that have day-to-day activities around it, it's, you know, but for us, it's like, it's an opportunity to see what happened here, you know?
Alright, let's get this meeting called to order at five thirty P M. We'll call the directors please. Barnes, Gorman.
Here.
He was. Gorman.
Yes.
Kaiser. Beanfield.
Here.
Field. Tom Chek.
Yes.
Zebra.
Yes.
Um, I have three pledge of allegiance. Allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item four, approval of the agenda. I want some approval. Okay, we got a motion by Mike Kaiser and a second by Jess. Any questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Item five, discussion impossible decision, policy review on updates. Do you want to take it away, Steve?
I'll take it away. Um, for a couple people I hadn't met yet, Amy and Jessica, I just met. I'm Steve LeBale, I work with Neola, which is a policy group the district uses. And it, we initially worked with the district on updating the entire policy book and then, at least twice a year, and I'll number it a lot of times more frequently, we will come with updates. What we're doing is looking, watching what's going on with legislation, O C R rulings, Department of Justice rulings, and then bringing the district language out to keep the policies updated. So, the last couple times I've come, we've put the language into the current district policy, so you could see where those changes are, either additions or revisions. And then the board has the opportunity, we haven't gone through, the board hasn't chosen to yet, go through them each individually, but if there's questions, I'll put the policy up, I'll explain sort of why is that language here. And John and I in discussion and Diane sort of broke this down and, this time, a little different, but we marked, if there was a legal reason for the change, marked it with an A. The compensation one, their legislature, and they'll pop it up. This would be an example, the legislature had allowed board members to waive their salaries. And last time, we put in the language about new board members, the legislation also allows current board members, if they desire to waive their salary by providing notice to the board and the clerk at least thirty days prior to the start of it. So that's an example of a, the statute changed, you had policy and compensation, we bring you the language so that it's updated and correct. So B, what I marked, yeah, was a fear to say, Steve, that letter A, they really don't have a lot of choice, I mean, that's one of those that's required by law. Yeah, we should, we should, you know, family medical leave's another one, there's a little bit of language in there about intermittent leave. And, and what this is about, and again, John's point is we'll take, this is the law on family medical leave, this language specifically is about intermittent leave. The best way for me to frame that for you is, my previous life was Director of Pupal Services Superintendent, and had a teacher who after a baby wanted to take, come back three days a week and have us get a sub two days a week. And wanted to do that for like six to eight weeks. The language in F M L A says, you need to work with your supervisor, and as long as that doesn't disrupt the district's operations, it might be agreed to. In my opinion, being gone two days a week for six to eight weeks was not a good plan for a fourth grade classroom, so we didn't approve that. The language though, in the F M L A that we added, would say, if the reason for that request of an intermittent leave was due to a serious health condition, let's say that baby had to go Tuesday and Thursday for, I'll make up kidney dialysis, we would not have had that kind of flexibility to say no to. So that's another example of, that's just, that's in the law, we need to have that in your policy. B were more their, their changes that while there may not be a legal perspective to them, they're, they're changes we would recommend. This is your policy on, on prohibition against disability discrimination in employment. And.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Are you going through them now, or are you going through them individually, or are you just explaining?
I'm just trying to point some things out, I wasn't gonna.
I think we should go through them item by item.
Okay, I can do that. Yep. So compensation, I mentioned already.
So I'm looking at a document on our agenda, starts out with bylaw policies in term, am I not looking at the right document?
There's two that we have going on tonight. The first is this, all of these changes were the ones were in the past and Neola's brought them. Then there was a second set of documents, and those the plan was to walk through, and those are under policy.
So I am looking at the wrong one.
You might see.
The first one on the agenda, I understand.
Yeah.
I see that now, thank you.
And these, the second set are ones that were brought forward by board members. So between Diane and I and Brent and John, we put this group together. The group we're looking at first, they're in the under district consideration, these are all Neola, that our policy, Neola brought forward. B is a, you had language that says you use Robert's Rules of Orders, Rules of Order. We added language that says, that may include the flexibility for procedures in small boards. If we were to talk about Robert's Rules of Order, whoever made the motion, I don't remember if it was Jess, to adopt the agenda, would have needed to stand and formally presented that. The procedures in small boards gives you that flexibility, you can stay seated. So, what we're finding is, in districts, there's greater, not greater, uh, yeah, maybe great scrutiny of policy. And if a word is off, or you're not following this exactly, districts are getting challenged. And so, part of our review is to say, in this case, you're, you've said we use Robert's Rules, which you do, but you're probably using the flexibility in small boards. This line down here, probably to me, the best part of this policy, it says, any failure to comply with the above procedure, doesn't affect the validity of any substantive action taken by the board within its legal authority. So it's saying, if you get challenged and say, you didn't stand, and we didn't get, but you're, that action is within the legal authority of the board, that doesn't make it sort of dismissive or go away. So that, that's, that's not a legal, there wasn't a statute related to that, but that's a good example of language that we think makes the policy better. And then C are where things where, we had two policies on special meetings. This one was said that, and this is the statute, anybody can request a special meeting. We then had the notice requirement of it in a separate spot, and boards are saying, wait a minute, that's confusing. So, we deleted the second one, and we just added it here to say, anybody can call a special meeting, request a special meeting, but these are the notice provisions. And this is right out of the statute. So that's why, this could have been an A, B, and C. That notice, and this may seem like odd language, copy of the notice will be served by person delivery, resident by first-class mail at least twenty-four hour, that's right out of the statute. Then the follow-up language says, well, wait, it says, special meeting, oh, without prior notice, if all board members are present in consent. Wait a minute, what happened to the notice requirement? And boards have asked about that. I think that language is in there, so if there's a, let's say there's a catastrophe in the district, and you don't have time for a twenty-four hour notice, this allows you in those circumstances to do it. So. So those are the three different kinds of policy changes that we brought forward, and I'm happy to explain any of them that you have questions on. Now, there was a couple in here where I put a note, um, you know, start cup, when you see the A's, the Start College Now is the tech college version of what used to be youth options, but when we get here to conflict of interest, okay? This policy is about, in this section anyways, about professional staff members, and they can't use their position for financial gain. And we then, and this was redone by attorneys after they redid the Education Department General Accountability Regulation. So this was completely redone, and they gave you some examples. And one would have been, the provision of any private lessons or services for a fee. And we, and we went back, so that would have meant, teachers in this district, if you have one calculus teacher, and parents or somebody was looking for some tutoring, without this additional language we added, which would have said, unless that provision for services is arranged outside of school, it is in addition to regular support. So, districts were saying to us, there's gotta be some way for us, especially in small districts, where if we only have one staff person, maybe calculus, physics, choir, band, that those private lessons can be okay. And attorneys went back and say, okay, as long as that teacher's not handing out a flyer and saying, Saturday at the library for fifty bucks an hour, I'll do calculus, as long as that's not what's happening, the arrangement with the parent is going to be okay. But it can't be that the teacher says, I'm, I'm not gonna help you now, come and see me on Saturday for money. So if we leave that first provision in, that would give the district a little flexibility, I don't know how often that happens, but other places, they say, yeah, parents will ask once in a while, can you do some tutoring and provide extra assistance? Where there's parentheses, is that saying, we're gonna say that's only if the kid's not in the teacher's class. I'm gonna guess there might be only one calculus teacher, or one physics teacher, which if we leave that in, means that the kid in that class by policy couldn't get extra help, so the, depending on what the board would like to do, I would generally remove that last piece of that, of that sentence. So that we say, provision of service is an example of a conflict of interest unless it's arranged outside of school and is separate from regular support you would get. Does that make sense to the board? I'm seeing some nods, some heads, some, okay. So what I would do, I would go in, and this one in that case, and I would just, I would leave everything else in, but that's so that it's no longer the case that just providing those lessons is a violation of conflict of interest. So we're good on that one? Okay. Uh, the same thing would apply to support staff, I'll fix this at home. And you might say, when would this happen with the support staff? I have districts where parent professionals are providing respite care for families with kids, especially with severe cognitive disabilities or other severe health conditions, where they're familiar with the kid, they know some of the medications, the other routines, so they're being sort of contracted to provide respite care. So that would be the same thing, we would say, you know, we would take out this piece here, arranged outside of school, and it's in addition to regular support. So those were two I had, I wanted to have, get some board input on. I'll fix, I'll fix this one. And then I talked with John about, or John talked with, but here's another one. Are we okay on the others? I'm gonna, I know I'm, this policy, okay? The first paragraph in that policy would be about the district providing services, I'm gonna use an example. Let's say the Lions Club asked the tech department at the high school, construction, can you build us six picnic tables for the Lions Park, or for an event at the fair, or whatever it is. And the first paragraph would say, as long as that sort of furthers the educational development of the students, and it's not real, and we're careful not to exploit them, that's okay. But if you're asking us to spend eight weeks making picnic tables, when we should really be doing other things in the curriculum, we might not agree to do that. So that's what the first paragraph about, is about. The second paragraph, and this is new, um, and actually, we should say the whole policy would be new, because when we did this originally, the sense was that wasn't, that first paragraph wasn't an issue here. That, you know, we, it wasn't something we really needed policy on. But because we brought this second paragraph, I thought I would put it on for board discussion. And the second paragraph is, this is about kids creating stuff, okay? So as we're getting into more computer programming, graphics development, STEM classes, project lead the way, where the kid might actually create something, whose isn't. I created an app in that computer class, and it's got some value to it, whose isn't. And the policy language would say, the first sentence says, students who develop those, who, that might carry intellectual property, they can pursue the protection of their rights on their own. So we're basically saying, if the kid develops it and they think there's something there, they're gonna pursue those property rights. The second sentence says, district staff can take, they can take steps to claim that intellectual property only if it's been agreed to ahead of time and approved by the superintendent. And the third line says, we as the district are not getting into the protectable nature of any particular one. So we're saying, it's the kids, if you wanna pursue it, that's fine. Staff member, unless there's agreement ahead of time, and it's approved by John, you don't have any rights to that.
It's agreement.
But we're staying out of whose, whose it is.
Is the word agreement strong enough in language?
It's, it's the language the attorneys put in there, Corey, so I'm, okay.
So that's why it doesn't really have the A, B, or C.
I'm sorry to tell you.
That's why it doesn't have like the A, B, or C.
Yeah, I, this was a.
Brand new language.
Yeah, brand new language. This is, you know, the, I don't know enough about intellectual property characteristics and the legal standard of it. But I forgot to mention to Amy and Jess, anything you see from us has either been written, approved, written, vetted, or approved by either Davis and Kiltow, or Strang Patterson, Rennin Lewis and Lacy, those two law firms. So that's where that language came from. We're not saying it's required language. It might be good protection language for the district. And so, most districts I worked with are saying, you know what, that might never happen. But if it does, it would be nice to have some language in place to guide us.
Now, this reminds me, remember those kids, they developed that thing with the fishing?
Yeah.
You know, it's like, that kind of falls into this.
Correct.
And I don't know.
Who came up with the idea, was it the kids, was it the teacher?
They did run into some copyright issues after they tried to go with copyright portal too, so.
Yeah.
This would have protected them.
I, I often wonder who owned the idea, did the kids or the teacher?
Now, we would have separate language about staff developing something sort of on your time. There's separate language for that. This is strictly about students. So, they're telling me, people are using some of the safety money, safety grab money to buy these bars that keep doors from being forced open. Those were developed by a kid, I think, in Hudson, maybe? So.
Would you, yeah, John. Just a point, again, the board probably knows this, but you talk about Strang Patterson or Davis and Kiltow, these are Wisconsin firms. A long time, extremely well-respected school attorneys. So it's not like there's somebody outside the state that's looking this over. Very clearly, these are Wisconsin school attorneys that are, usually charge a pretty big bank of dollars for me to do that. They would hire them, obviously, Neola has hired them.
Yeah. A number of them, you, some used to work for Boardman and Clark's, some used to work for Davis and Kiltow, and they then broke off on their own in the last couple of years. So, this is up to you. This is a, you know, I don't know if administration wants to weigh in on it, their thoughts, but it's really, it's ob, it's, when you see the parentheses like that, that's optional language for the district, do you wanna take it or not? We're not saying it's, it's a statute-related, but it's probably good language to the situation you described.
Yeah, I mean, I would be for it, just because we ran into that situation. Do we have anything currently in the student handbooks reflecting that? Because how many students are actually involved with our policies and, you know what I mean?
Yeah, we don't have anything regarding this.
I would see it becoming more of an issue with Fab Lab and the metals education and those kinds of things now, as we start to push into the Fab Lab classes.
Something for that, you can tell to refer to. I think it's better like you indicated to be proactive rather than reactive, so I think we absolutely need to have that. So I am shocked that you had said that previously that we decided not to put this out.
Well, the first paragraph was all we had originally, and when we added this new language as part of this update, and it came out of the things they're describing, where districts were saying, we need something, so this is where it seemed to fit well. So I struck through the parentheses, which means, if or what, yeah, and you can see, this was developed, this was written by Jeff Lacy. So he's the Lacy on the end of Strang Patterson, Rennin Lewis and Lacy.
What's your strike on me?
Go ahead.
What's your, what's your strike on me? Means you're keeping this?
Yes.
Okay.
Normally, you would put an X in it, but when they process, the next step in this, if the board approves these, then, I tell the office in Ohio, they're approved on October twenty-third, they automatically update your website. And there's a process they use, if they see the print that they've struck through, they know that means keep it. So that one we're good on. There was only one other I had, and this, we had talked about, Brady had looked at. There's more and more going on around the state with open records and open records requests, and so, we've brought you language with regard to text, what are, in terms of official school business, texts or instant messages. And so, it's if you're going to use those for official school business, how are you going to archive them? Case there's an open records request. Or B says, we're gonna limit how we use them. Right now, your email, if you're using the school district email, that's automatically archived, so if you can open records request, that, that's there. So I think tech, technology reviewed this and would go with option B, I think, is what they said.
Yeah, Brady looked it over, sent us a memo, said that he was very comfortable with option B and all the sub-points of option B.
Okay.
So that's coming from your director of technology.
So I don't know how much work gets done, or how much official school business is done via text. But, and, and there's software that will, will archive that, but if, if you, if you don't wanna go there, Rob, what we're saying is, we should limit it then to the phone calls and or email where we know it's being archived. So, it doesn't mean if you're using your cellphone for email, that your cellphone is subject, the whole thing is subject to our open records review, but whatever official school business might be. So.
I think this is where we need to defer to our administrators and say.
Yeah, well, I do a lot of emails on my phone, but that's, that's the Google.
It's still rolled through our.
It's still rolled through our own system, so.
I would say the only time we have a text message is like, the radio isn't gonna reach, hey, tell them, or I usually just say, give me a call, I don't know how that falls into the realm of official work.
School business, yeah. Yeah, I'll send stuff to our athletic director, seeing the score of this, and we put it on social media, but. It's, it's a, this is, you know, I work with a number of districts, this is a difficult one for districts to figure out how to manage. There's software that will do it. And again, my tendency in working is to go way out here, where the nth degree of what might happen, because if it does, you wanna be, you wanna be prepared for it. So, um, you know, that.
A lot of this, and a lot of districts have moved away from providing a cellphone for the administration.
Yes. Most don't wanna carry two phones.
Right, and that would, I would want to.
But it's still, you know, then, again, if you're using it for email, as long, and it's a district email, you know that's being, that's being. So those are the ones I have questions on. I didn't know if you, there were any that you reviewed and specifically wanted me to talk about.
Now, Steve, when you say you have questions on it, you want us to prove them tonight. Do we have to do the first?
We would, that's what normally had happened in the past. The boards, the boards' position was if they were revisions, we could do those in a single reading. If they were new policy that required two readings, so remember last time we brought the Baynes policy, and there were one or two others, those were two readings. Otherwise, I'm pretty sure.
The revisions, I heard you, we can do it in the first.
That's what we did. Yep, we've done in the past. And those were usually, yeah. Yeah, it was usually done at this meeting, there was a motion and a second to approve the revisions, and off we went. Uh, and again, I'm just saying, if there were things you saw in this list, and so, explain that to me. This is a chance for me to do that. Otherwise, what we'll do is, we'll go to that other set, which were the ones that the board members brought forward. These are the ones Neola brought forward. And again, at least twice a year, we've been doing this. You'll see on occasion from us special updates, because we can't wait. We can't wait.
I have one, there are one type twice a year.
Where is it?
On a personal communication device. Bottom of page one, you say it from the proper, you said it from P D C, not P C D.
Oh. Good for you. That's me.
Okay, so then if I'm here, you want, oh, I'm gonna do your problem now.
Thank you.
Pushing to approve then, that's what I want to do.
Okay, are there questions on any?
Then I see one here, we had a blank that needed to be filled in before we approved it.
Uh, was that, uh?
I can't remember which one I read. Some of we have blanked purposely because of, like, on a personal communication device, needed information from someone.
That one had, there were some, I was gonna depend on Corey to, or Brady to fill those in for me.
Oh, that, that one, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's different than what I'm saying. I thought there was one on here that had that blank, looking for information from us. I can't remember which one it was right now.
Was that forty-one sixty-two, correct?
Controlled sentences.
Oh, I know what it is. Oh, my, okay, I, I, this isn't the blank, but, uh, this was for board as well. Start College Now is, when they broke off youth options into early college credit, Start College Now is the tech version, the tech side of it, so a student who's completed tenth grade can take courses at the tech college. You have the ability to limit that to eighteen total post-secondary credits, if you want.
And that's one of the new ones, it has come back with the second reading, correct?
That would be a new one, yes, that would be. And I'll be talking about that tonight, and, and we've used the eighteen credits. Okay.
And you can see, that would really be a, be a, for administration.
Yeah. The statute. That's just preventing students from, you know, they could take all of their classes at N T C or D W Stevens Point, and we're paying for the whole thing. So the eighteen credits tells the students that they, that it becomes, you know, a school. The, the board has the ability by statute to limit it to that eighteen, and same thing with early college credit. So this is saying, if you've taken twelve under early college credit and six already. So this is saying, if you've taken twelve under early college credit, and six already under Start College Now, which is the tech version, that's your limit, that's your limit. If you, if you leave it open, they could do thirty-six, they could do, and you're right, the district's paying for those courses.
Okay, go down to the bottom of your list. Okay, scroll, who's name that, scroll, huh? Okay, so, I thought it was at the end there. So the school resource officer program, is that in our next section?
What's at the bottom? It says new.
It's eighty-four oh seven.
Do you have a resource officer?
Yes.
Okay, maybe that was.
Because there were, there were things in here as of, that we needed to talk about. And is that part of the first group?
That would be part of this first group, yeah, you're right, Amy. The question would be, I must have been thinking you didn't have one, I, my mistake. This would be, there's, districts generally approach this in two different ways. One is policy, the other is, do you have an agreement, is there like an agreement with either the Mozzamie Police Department or Maritah County Sheriff's Department to place somebody here? And the agreement itself sort of covers all of this? If that's the case, districts are saying, well, I don't know that we really need a policy for it, because we have this agreement that the boards approving already. But you can also still have the policy that goes with it. So that's again, up to the board how you wanna handle it.
I don't know what that other agreement says, so I. Brent, you, do we have an agreement with the Mozzamie Police Department right now?
There's, we had one, but I don't, I don't think there's anything current that Jeff has given us. We just basically get a bill and pay it, so I mean, he provides the service, you know, weekly to the school, you know, for a full-time police officer, pretty much.
Then, if you, if you wanna put some sort of parameters on that relationship, the policy is the ability to do that. Again, that's, that's up to the board. If you want input, you know, that's. So what, what this would say though, is that, in this paragraph, these services shall be set forth in an agreement between the district and the law enforcement agency. So it's sort of gonna force the issue, to say, when are they gonna be here? Here's part of the purpose of it, and then we get, you know, when are they gonna provide reports? I don't know if they come and do anything for the board, you know, reports to the board, or if that's something the board even wants.
I'd say looking at all those, some letters, categories.